Hey Dan. Carol, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Do you want me to remain unmuted throughout the meeting and just, or do you want me to mute unless I'm doing roll call?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to it. Maybe Dan will weigh in and let us, let us know how it works best.
Okay.
Hey there Tina, um, I think just if you can toggle your microphone just for the roll call vote.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, it is seven thirty, so as we've been doing for our remote planning commission meetings, I'll go ahead and start the meeting tonight. First of all, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good night everyone. Hi, everybody.
Hey Brian.
Hey.
Thanks, everybody who's able to attend. Just quickly, I'll go over the summary of how these meetings work. We are having what I think is our fourth remote planning commission meeting. We are going to be broadcasting live on YouTube and we will be proceeding as if this is a normal meeting, but using remote public input techniques. So we have several agenda items tonight. One is going to be a minor site plan amendment to architectural elevation within a planned residential development project called Country Walk. We will then have a informal discussion of a potential zoning ordinance text amendment regarding the RM multiple family residential zoning district. And then finally, we, after those discussions, which I think will be fairly brief, there will be a discussion of the 2020 Van Buren Township master plan and whether the planning commission is comfortable releasing this document for sixty-three day review, or I should say recommending the release thereof to the board of trustees. So those are the three main agenda items tonight. If you wish to participate in any of these discussions, the way you can do that is by either using the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen. And then our moderators will see that your hand is raised and they can call on you. You can also use the chat function to type your comments into the chat window. Or if you're dialing by phone, you can press star nine and that will look like a raised hand to our moderators and they can unmute your phone call and you can speak that way. So with no further ado, I will start the agenda by releasing this out to our planning commission chair, Carol Thompson.
Thanks Director Powers. Welcome to the Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, July 8th of 2020. And we'll start with a roll call, please. Ms. Harmon.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Brian Kelly.
Here.
Medina Atchinson.
Here.
Sherry Budd.
Here.
Joan Franzway is excused. Donald Boynton.
Yeah.
Carol Thompson.
Here. Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Boynton, support?
Support Commissioner Jar.
Report Commissioner Jar. Any discussion or changes to the agenda? All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, our agenda's approved. We have minutes, lengthy minutes from the June 24th, 2020 planning commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Commissioner Boynton, support?
Support. Support.
Commissioner Kelly, any corrections or changes to the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the June twenty-four minutes, please aye.
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 Carol. Through the chair, we need to remember that these minutes need to be roll called just because that's the way they want it when you're doing a visual.
You're right, and I apologize. We'll go from, and on the minutes, the motion for the minutes, I'll ask Ms. Harmon to do a roll call vote, please.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Medina Atchinson.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. So thank you. The minutes are approved and tonight we do not have a public hearing. We'll go directly to new business. The first item is Upland Homes Country Walk Site Plan Amendment. The applicant, Upland Homes, is requesting an amendment to the approved Country Walk Site Plan for revised single-family architectural elevations. The location is the unfinished Country Walk subdivision that is the subject of this request. It is located on the east side of Martinsville Road and north of Savage Road. And our first hearing will be from, a presentation from the applicant, please.
Through the chair. Let me just check, if, if I may, before we go to the applicant. Just want to see if I'll have a chance to clarify, and I will, I apologize. Let's let the, as, as the agenda states, the applicant can go first. I just have some clarifications to make and staff report comments. But Ms. Phillip is here to discuss the project, so I'll turn this over to him first.
Great. Hi guys. I have a, a new plan. It's a fifteen forty-six ranch floor plan. And I have several elevations. A, B, C, D, and E with front elevations and side elevations that I would like to get approved for the Country Walk subdivision. And first, you know, to be substantially different.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Klinsman. We'll hear the updates and recommendations from Director Powers and then maybe there'll be some questions or other comments from you after that. But now we'll go to Director Powers, please.
Thank you. So I do want to just run through my comments quickly and clarify some items in my comments. So the proposal before you is a request to, like, like it states, consider a minor site plan amendment to the Upland Homes architectural elevations within the Country Walk project to allow what's called the fifteen forty-six model with five different elevation types. In these planned residential development projects, there is sort of a preset array of architectural elevation styles that the residential homes have. And they're meant to ensure compliance with section five point one one five of the Township Zoning Ordinance to make sure that, excuse me, five point one one six, to make sure that the homes have substantially different architecture and meet some other requirements with respect to the presence of a minimum amount of side entry garages within the project and some other design details. That makes sure that the residential project has uniqueness and variety within its architectural standards. Now, when builders proceed through a development project, they may have other models that they decide are marketable and attractive, so they'll propose new model types. And that is what's happening in this case. I should clarify and I will share my screen briefly. There are some changes to my comments because there was a clerical error on my part when I was first processing these, the numbering. I mixed up that the detailed version of the fifteen forty-six plan I read as eighteen fifteen. And really what I labeled as eighteen fifteen in the packet is just the detailed floor plan version of kind of the base template for these fifteen forty-six models. So there are some changes to my comments. I have the changes on the screen here. Can everybody see, let's see. Can everybody see my report packet here?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So I just want to clarify that there is really one elevation style being proposed with five variations, A through E. There's no new information in terms of the submittals from the applicant in your packet. It's just the way that I described the submittals. So this is called the fifteen forty-six model. It will have floor area of one thousand five hundred and eighty-five square feet. And there are features with respect to roof pitch that are displayed on the elevations. And there are different design features within the five different variations of this model. And this is the table that kind of describes those variations. And you can see on a later version of the elevations that were put in your packet, there are descriptions of the roof pitches varying from five on twelve to twelve on twelve. There's varying roof styles with some being reverse gable, some being gable. The relation of the door to the main mass is basically in the center for all of them. But there are different numbers of windows, different design features relative to the main mass and different materiality. There's shake siding and horizontal siding mixed with a brick in different cases. So among these models, what we're looking for is that they meet three of five criteria for substantial difference. And those criteria are basically the columns in this table. And I found that the mix of elevations being proposed will be able to meet those criteria. And in relation to the other models that have been proposed in this project to date, these units will also have substantial variety. There is an exhibit attached to your packet that includes all of the models proposed by Upland Homes to date in the Country Walk project. So what we're really looking for is these five elevation styles in comparison to one another combined with how they compare to the other elevation styles throughout the project. And I do find that there is substantial difference that is met. The only other significant thing that we're looking for is the size of the units. There is a requirement that, and let me stop sharing my screen so I can just focus on the elevation itself. That the size of the unit on average in this development has to be one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. And these are smaller, they're fifteen eighty-five, so slightly under sixteen hundred square feet. But what we're looking for is the average among the four hundred and sixteen units in the project at large. So as long as we are tracking the overall average, and, and we can do that using the database that we have for, for this project site and for all buildings. I found just from a cursory search of the eighteen, eighteen miscellaneous units in the three streets that have been most recently developed, the average or mean floor area is roughly nineteen hundred square feet. So staff can review, especially if this is just in consideration of a, a small number of sites, we can review smaller elevations that, that serve a specific need. And so here are the, again, the detailed versions of the drawing. The floor plan, what I had referred to as the eighteen ten on these sheets is actually the detailed version of the fifteen forty-six. And then of course, the the sort of rendered version of these elevations, depending on whether they have a front entry garage or a side entry garage, there are five different models you could look at. And so my recommendation is for approval subject to the careful review by staff of these units as they are proposed with building permit applications to evaluate that there is substantial difference among the various elevations. And we do that with each building permit application within these PRB projects. So my recommendation is for conditional approval, and I do apologize for the error in some of my comments, but just as long as you are paying attention to the submittals from the applicant and my takeaway conditional approval recommendation remains the same. So I'm glad to answer any questions about that.
Great. Thanks Director Powers. Ask for questions or comments from the commission or staff or the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boynton.
Just one, just one, just one point. Where, where are these? Are these in Country Walk Three or in Country Walk Four?
Four. Country Walk Four.
Okay. Then we just need to make a correction in staff's cover letter. Director Powers.
I think there might be, I think I have, I think I do have a few lots in three, but most of, the majority of, of my lots are in four.
Okay. Um. Okay. If, 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 if that's the case, fine, that's the case. That's, that's, that's good. We still need to correct the, the the paperwork from our director power. That's all. That's all.
Okay.
Cause the paperwork says just Country Walk Three Homeowners Association.
Okay.
I know for sure, I believe there's only two homes left to be completed in Country Walk Three and both of those lots have signage on them from Gilbert Homes.
Okay. Yeah.
And, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
That's all. That's all. That's all.
Okay. Thanks gentlemen. Good clarification. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Questions or comments on this agenda item? Moderators? Nobody? Alright.
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Thank you. So we've seen similar applications before. This is not unusual for us. Are you ready to make a motion, planning commissioner?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boynton.
I'll go ahead and move that the applicant, Upland Homes, who is requesting an amendment to the approved Country Walk Site Plan for revised single-family architectural evaluations. Subject of the request, the development is located on the east side of Martinsville Road, north of Savage Road. Along with the correction to the paperwork from Director Power correcting Country Walk Three to Country Walk Four, Homeowners Association. Letter dated July first of twenty twenty. Along with any recommendations within that letter.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there support?
Or?
Commissioner Kelly, support? Any discussion on the motion? Then a roll call vote, please, Ms. Harmon.
Looks like.
Oh, there we go. Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Medina Atchinson.
Yes.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. Thank you. Alright, Mr. Klinsman, we'll send you forward and keep working with staff to make sure that all of the conditions are met. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to, you're, you're welcome. Thank you. Good night.
Night.
We'll move to item two under new business, which is RM multiple dwelling residential district amendments. The proposed amendments that would allow single-family detached dwellings at a density of six to seven units per acre as a permitted land use by right in the RM multiple dwelling residential district. And would contemplate dimensional requirements for these detached, single-family dwellings. The amendment will be to section three point one oh seven B and three point one oh seven E RM multiple dwelling residential district permitted uses and dimension regulations. We'll start first with a presentation from staff. Is that you, Director Powers?
Yes, I can start with a very broad overview of comments and then I will ask for some additional comments from our principal planner, Vidya Krishnan. So I'll just give a broad overview of what is being discussed here and what we're looking for some guidance on. And this is the first of what presumably would be multiple discussions, but tonight I'd like to describe the request briefly by just showing sort of a land use concept. So the idea of what we're talking about tonight is that there is potentially a place in our zoning ordinance and in our community for a detached style of residential, single-family residential dwellings at a higher density that is currently permitted in any of our single-family residential zoning districts, but at a lower density than would be typical in our multiple-family zoning district. There is a context for this in a planning exercise that the planning commission underwent. Last year, there was a review and approval of a master plan amendment for the lot at four one six two zero East Huron River Drive to consider multiple-family residential at a density between six and seven units per acre. So when we conceptualize something like that, what we're looking for now is to see how that gets validated and formalized in the zoning ordinance text. And so what we're looking for guidance from is to see if there's a place in the zoning ordinance to allow, within the multiple-family residential zoning district, perhaps lots that are smaller with, with lower setbacks, side yard setbacks, and with a higher gross density than would be typically permitted in the single-family residential zoning district and relegated to the multiple-family residential zoning district. Not to address the specific project, but to address that project, but also to consider whether there's a purpose for this in our zoning ordinance. So there is sort of a light and heavy interpretation of this that our planner Vidya Krishnan has put together recommendations for. And she can go through those in more detail, but it is just to say that there is a recommendation that would result in something closer to six units per acre with a sixty-three hundred square foot minimum lot size, excuse me, with closer to a higher lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet or a closer to seven units per acre density with a lower lot size of sixty-three hundred square feet. Backing this conversation, there is a concept drawing showing a potential conceptual layout for the site at four one six two zero East Huron River Drive. You know, to the extent that we can, I encourage us to think broader to where this kind of project can be applicable, not just on that site, but elsewhere in the community, because it is a request to consider a, a general ordinance text amendment. At this time, we see that as being the, the most significant site where this would potentially occur. But I will defer otherwise to our planner to discuss the details of this proposal, but that is just a broad overview that we are looking at two different standards for a higher density detached, single-family home within the RM zoning district. So with that, I'll defer to Vidya Krishnan.
Thank you, Director Powers. Just to refresh the township's memory and for the members of the audience who are listening, in early twenty nineteen, the township had received a request from Mr. Scott Jones to rezone a thirteen point six acre parcel on East Huron River Drive from R one C, which is single-family residential, to RM, which is multiple-family residential. The applicant's proposal was to construct detached, single-family dwelling units in a condominium. Now, the R one C zoning district allows for the construction of single-family homes at a density of approximately five dwelling units per acre. The applicant's proposal was to build six to seven dwelling units per acre. After significant consideration, the township did amend the master plan to change the zoning on this site from R one C to RM, but with limitations. The master plan clearly designated that the density cannot exceed six to seven units per acre. Now, subsequent to the master plan amendment, the next step is to make changes to the zoning ordinance. Now, the changes we are looking at is to add single-family detached dwellings as a permitted use in the RM district with density limitations. Typically, the RM district allows only for multiple-family dwellings, and that too, they are all attached. So this amendment would allow for detached, single-family units. The change is not just going to benefit the applicant. We do have other situations in the township where we have single-family homes on RM zone properties. So such a change would actually make some of the existing non-conformities also go away. Now, the master plan amendment says six to seven dwelling units per acre. If you translate that, that is anywhere from seven thousand two hundred and sixty square feet to six thousand two hundred and twenty-three square feet for lot size. Now, in our single-family residential districts, starting from R one A all the way to R one C, our lot sizes vary anywhere from eight thousand four hundred square feet all the way up to twenty thousand square feet. Now, if we take Mr. Jones's concept plan that has been presented to the township, it translates to a lot size of approximately six thousand three hundred square feet. So if we analyze the schedule of regulation, section four point one zero two, and use a rough sliding scale, like currently we go from twenty thousand to ten thousand to, you know, a smaller size, then we go to eight thousand four hundred. If we were to use the same sliding scale rule, we would end up at a lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet. So what we have brought before you is to consider two density options under the master plan with said six to seven units. One would be the low-range density, which would allow for about six point zero five units per acre. So that would actually translate to a minimum lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet with a sixty-foot lot width and a minimum side yard of ten. Other option is to go at the high end of the density in the master plan. It should be six point nine one dwelling units per acre, closer to the seven. That would translate to six thousand three hundred square feet lot size, forty-five foot lot width, and a side yard of five feet. So that is what the applicant is proposing at the higher end of density, but under the master plan, there are two densities you could consider. Between six and seven, you can go anywhere from seven thousand two hundred to six thousand three hundred square feet. There is another section in the zoning ordinance. Typically, whenever you change one portion of the zoning ordinance, you've got to make sure it doesn't conflict or contradict anything else in the ordinance. We have another section called five point one one two, and that has got standards for all single-family residential basically that they have to connect to public water, sewer, the architectural requirements that they have to follow. We would like to keep that intact. Irrespective of this being single-family detached in a multiple-family district, we would like to make sure that the existing standards that are required for single-family homes are applicable to this proposal too. So the text amendment that is before you tonight basically has got three aspects. One is to add single-family detached dwelling units with limited density in the RM district. The second one is to make a determination, what is the lot size that you would like to allow these detached units to be at? Would you like it to be at the higher end of the density at six-thousand-three-hundred square foot lot with a forty-five-foot lot width? Or would you like to go with the lower end, which is seven-thousand-two-hundred square foot lot size with a sixty-foot lot width? And finally, you would also decide to keep section 5.114, continue to be applicable to any amendment that you might adopt. So I would be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of supporting documentation in your packet. It's a lot to take in at one point. So we would just like to open this up for initial discussion. Any questions, concerns that you might have, that Director Powers and I can.
Great, thanks, Ms. Krishnan and Director Powers. Good overview and then, uh, direction on the specifics that you're looking at right now. So questions or comments from the commission?
Through the chair.
I'll take Commissioner Edgerton first, please.
Okay, um, uh, through the chair, uh, this is for Vidya or for Director Powers. Um, I am looking at the concept. I like the limitations. Um, we definitely have, I, I believe enough apartments, multi-dwellings. So I like the fact that, um, you know, uh, we would add limitations where we would not have a high-rise or multiple-family dwellings on that property. With that being said, is looking at the concept in the back of our packet, um, is this somewhat similar? Is what is being proposed somewhat similar to, um, Cherry Hill Village in Canton, Michigan? Where the lot is very small, the home is very large, and they're kind of somewhat closer together because they were, I believe, I mean, they're over twenty years old now, but they were looking for, um, kind of like a neighborhood feel. Um, can you possibly answer that question? I'm not sure if Dan is familiar with Cherry Hill. I know he's new to the neighborhood.
I live half a mile from there, so I've been to Cherry Hill Village many times. Uh, this would be comparable, if not slightly smaller in terms of lot width. Yeah, Cherry Hill Village is designed more like those neighborhoods with porches, lots clubbed very close together, minimum side yard setbacks. So it would be similar to what the applicant is proposing, if not slightly tighter than that.
Um, through the chair, um, Vidya, um, do we know like what the difference is, what the comparison Cherry Hill Village to what is being proposed?
That, that's probably a good research question. I'm not sure if, uh, Vidya knows, uh, right out of the gate, but that might be a good, uh, thing to follow up with. If there are analogous projects you want us to look into for comparison, we could, we could do something like that. Um, another project that comes to mind is the one, uh, just north of downtown Belleville. I'm not sure, that, that would be, I think, a little bit of a different scale and a little bit higher intensity as well. Those are those uh, sort of town home-style units, uh, narrower lots, um, but at slightly different use. Uh, the, the, those are the kinds of questions that, um, we could look into for, uh, sort of comparison projects.
Commissioner Aginson, would you like to compare the architectural styles also? Because what we have currently from the applicant is concept architectural elevations. Would you like to give an idea of comparing that to what is there in near downtown Belleville and also at Cherry Hill Village?
Absolutely. The more comparison we have, the better, because, um, I just feel like when I have a visual that I can look at, like, I, when I saw the concepts, I immediately thought of Cherry Hill Village uh, from twenty years ago, looking at that and going, wow, these homes are really, really close together. However, when we first see it, we're kind of alarmed. However, over the years, as you know, uh, living close by, the homes sell there very quickly. People, you know, it's, it's been very popular. So I just would like any kind of comparison we can get. Um, I'm, I'm all for.
Great. That'll be helpful to have staff bring that back. Anything else right now, Commissioner Edgerton?
No, thank you.
You? Um, is it Commissioner Jar who also had questions or comments?
Uh, yes, thank you. Vidya, the option A, option B, uh, this is intended to be two choices for us to consider. This isn't two options to be put in for the ordinance, right?
Correct. This is for the Planning Commission to decide which way you would like to go. Would you like to go smaller lots? Do you like to go bigger, wider lots within the range that is permissible under the master plan? So it's, it's up to the Planning Commission.
Uh, thank you. I do agree with Commissioner Edgerton, seeing comparables, uh, that line up with the different options would go a long way to helping us make an informed decision uh, with regard to the ordinance change, if we want to make it, and how we should approach it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Other commissioners, questions or comments? I'll ask if anyone in the audience has questions or comments on this agenda item. From the moderator. So let's see, um, if we can give staff just a little bit more feedback. So the, definitely the density and the size, we're going to see some comparisons come back. Um, does anyone have questions or comments to staff about keeping intact the, um, five, is it five-point-one-five, which sets for standards and requirements for the detached dwelling?
Yes, it is five-point-one-one-five. And I'm looking, uh, it's all within that. Five-point-one-one-four is for, uh, this is, we wanted to make sure this was in there because this en- ensures that there are benchmarks for minimum standards for single-family residential dwellings wherever they're built, um, so that we don't, you know, authorize leniency on, on things like the foundation or, um, the, the, the dwelling space within the unit, uh, simply because the lot is smaller. So there are certain standards we want construction to be upheld for, for all detached, single-family residential units. So we wanted to make sure that this particular ordinance does not negate those standards, uh, either inside of a, uh, planned residential development or outside of. And as you just saw in the last, uh, item on the agenda, inside of PRDs, there are other standards that will also apply in terms of uh, the variation between the units and things of that nature.
Okay, so the question to us, make sure I understand, is keep those standards not only in the ordinance, but in relationship to whatever changes we make in RM to allow the detach. Is that the question?
That's right.
Okay. So anybody have any questions or comments about holding on to those ordinance standards, whether it is attached or detached in RM?
Through the chair.
Sure, Commissioner Jar.
Does that section also include developments done under site condominium rules?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boynton.
Um, I don't know where this exactly falls, but I'm going to ask the question. Is, 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 is the ground situated or suitable enough to, um, house all of these lots at this time?
That's certainly a, a good question. Um, I, I, I don't know if we know the answer at this point. We, we kind of have to assume the best, but we of course want the, uh, those kinds of details to be addressed early in the design process for any project. The first thing I think is to lay the foundation in master planning, which, uh, the Planning Commission and Board, uh, did when they, uh, authorized the, the six to seven units per acre multifamily residential on the site that we're sort of focusing on. Uh, and then within that, we want to make sure the zoning conditions are in place for a rezoning to suit the, the type of use that's being proposed. So we're kind of at that stage, uh, not really a design detail yet, but that is very much something that'll be front and center of the design review process for a preliminary site plan, uh, for any project there. And presumably for rezoning, that's the kind of thing that should be established at the outset of a project. Um, I don't know much about the soil integrity, but, uh, the engineering review process will, uh, make sure that there's review of that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you both. Um, so it seems like we have some consensus to staff on holding on to our, um, our standards, whether we, uh, are in RM or other residential districts and whether it is attached or detached. But we want more information, including the comparisons, to let us really kind of visualize what the density and the, the size and the setbacks would be, um, to help us evaluate and and tell you what a recommendation is on that aspect of the question. Does that sound right to everyone?
Yes.
Good. All right, so we have a homework assignment for staff. Staff, any other, uh, anything else you want to ask us before we send you off to do more homework?
No, I, I think Director Powers and I will get back to the board and bring together information for you to see.
Through the chair.
Here, Commissioner Edgerton.
Um, I just want, I, right in the second paragraph that came from our principal planner, Vidya, um, Kish- Krishnan, I do want to talk about the limitations that she mentions. Um, I just want to make sure that I understand that, whether, um, option A or option B is selected, I just want to know, and, and, you know, for me, I want to know exactly what limitations. When I go to the graph on page number thirty-seven, um, it has RM, it has the table on here, and it talks about apartments, multifamily, high-rise dwellings. Can you tell me exactly what we're talking about when we speak to the limitations? Like, um, I know that when, um, zoning is redone, it's going to stay with the property, with the address. Um, I just get concerned that, you know, if our applicant that's proposing this, we lose them. You know, he decide, he changes his mind, he sells the property. I, I don't want to see another large apartment complex, multi-unit, high-rise go up there. Um, and I'm just, that's my concern. Um, so I just, I just want a lots of different variety in the community of housing. So can you, uh, tell us more about the limitations?
I believe the RM district amendment in the master plan, it clearly said when it's been changed from R1C to RM, that the only use that would be permitted on this property would be single-family detached dwellings, the density of six to seven dwelling units per acre. This parcel will, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Powers, I believe this parcel is, cannot be developed under the other uses that are permitted in the RM district, such as high-rises, apartments, et cetera. It was changed from single-family to RM designation, permits detached, single-family dwellings strictly, so it's not going to be allowed to uh, become an apartment complex or something.
Yeah, that is my understanding as well, and, uh, keep in mind that the property currently is still zoned, uh, I believe it's still zoned, single-family residential.
Correct.
Master plan is the guiding, uh, context for any rezoning that would occur here. And as Vidya, uh, stated, the master plan is very specific in this, uh, part of the township where it says that this has to be detached, single-family dwellings at that intensity. Uh, and so now we're at the point where we're kind of framing up a potential zoning, uh, environment to allow that to occur in the, uh, in the zoning ordinance.
Uh, as an added clarification, if and when this zoning amendment goes through, the next step will be for the applicant to apply for conditional rezoning of that parcel. It is still zoned R1C. You're changing the zoning ordinance so that he has something valid to rezone his property to. So he will be back before you for a conditional rezoning, at which time you can reiterate that this property is being rezoned in accordance to the master plan to allow only for detached, single-family dwellings.
Okay, good clarifications and still lots to be done before we see a development there. So I'll ask one more time, any, anyone else on this agenda item?
I do have staff, uh, I'm sorry, I'd like to make one more request.
It's fine.
Sorry. Hey, uh, in our last meeting, you also provided a map of the parcels that our previous ordinance, uh, affected. These changes that we are considering affect more than just one developer's parcel. It affects every RM district, uh, parcel in the township. I think I'd like to see a review of what are those parcels currently, what could be developed, where could we be putting this? Where, if we made these changes, where would the higher density be allowed in the township? So that we have a basis to compare our change.
Very good, very good point. You.
Good, good discussion, good requests, and we look forward to hearing some, uh, some direction and answers back. So thanks to staff. If we're ready, I'll move to item number three. Chair? Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, it looks like we do have a public comment on that agenda item with the raised hand.
Great, let's hear it. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Thank you for, uh, hearing us tonight. Um, I just wanted to clarify if I could for, on the project. So the, the concepts that we've provided, I would say, um, since we've been taking names on lists of people interested in the project, which I, we're at thirty-seven, uh, people currently interested in, in the project, um, we've kind of, um, adapted a more of a two-story concept, and additionally, we found out through engineering, basements are not going to be feasible because of the relationship to the water line and, um, um, property, um, height. So, um, we, we get a lot of feedback that people want a first-floor master, but we also think they want, um, additional bedrooms upstairs with like a Jack and Jill situation. So for concept, I think the houses in town that you were talking about on Belleville are, um, very similar to what, uh, we will end up with. Our, our lot width is wider than they are in town, and the spacing in town is about seven feet between homes, and we're requesting ten feet, so a little bit, uh, more space in between. The other thing I'd say between that development and Cherry Hill, Cherry Hill has a lot of access from the alleyway with their garages in the back. We do, uh, because really the lake side of, uh, the majority of the lots will be the front yard. The, the driveways will be, and the garage will be off of the driveway in front of the home as you approach it from the, from the road. So those are just two comments. We have applied for that, um, change. We initially applied in, uh, on four-thirty of twenty-nineteen for the change from R1C to RM. Then we resubmitted that on two-twelve of twenty-twenty from the R1C to RM, uh, plus conditions, and have also provided a, um, list of, um, what those conditions would be. So that's kind of where we feel the status is, and I just wanted to make the, the board aware of that. And again, thank you for considering us.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. It's helpful to know that your project is moving in, and we'll keep our part of changes also moving forward, and hopefully we'll meet in the middle.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from audience or commissioners or staff on this agenda item? All right. Hearing that, we'll move to item number three. It is a review of Van Buren Township twenty-twenty master plan. The Planning Commission will discuss a full draft of the twenty-twenty master plan and consider forwarding a recommendation to the Township Board to release the full draft for a sixty-six, sixty-three-day plan review. And we have, um, a lot of information to hear, and we'll start with staff and then our consultant, please presenting where the work group has come and, uh, where we're at with the development of an, a revised master plan. Director Powers?
Thank you. I'll give a very quick overview, and I'm stepping in, uh, very far down the road. You folks have done a lot of work on this. Our consultants have done a lot of work on this, and the board has done a lot of work on this. And the public has contributed a lot in the last three, uh, three-ish years. I know this started in late And the public has contributed a lot in the last three uh, three-ish years. I know this started in late twenty seventeen and it's been a, a public process that has involved two extensive survey efforts and uh most recently in terms of public input, the workshops in early October of twenty nineteen. Uh, and so I'm learning a lot about the community, myself reviewing this document. Uh, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. But um, at the same time, you folks should uh hear the overview of the whole thing and look at it with a critical eye as you are the Planning Commission. Um, the Planning Enabling Act in the state of Michigan asks for uh the Planning Commission to review the full document uh and then potentially make a recommendation to our township board or legislative body to then vote on releasing the full draft for a sixty-three day review period. So I realize this is the first time you have the full uh final uh full draft in front of you or final, final rough draft at this point. But uh, the, it's an opportunity for you to look through it in detail. Uh, there's also an interactive future land use map that I've provided that helps you to kind of navigate the community and look at least at the future land use is designated in the document. Um, but for a better start-to-finish overview, I'll turn this over to our master plan consultant with McKenna, Adam Cook. And Adam, I just want to know if you need, uh, if you have screen sharing capability and if you're able to use your slides or do you want me to put on the screen the slides that you shared?
Thank you, Dan. Um, I'm gonna try to share my screen. I think we can make that work. Okay, so good evening, everyone. Uh, it's nice to see all of you again, albeit virtually. Um, and Dan gave a very good introduction. Um, there's been a lot of hard work on everybody's part from the electeds and the appointeds, uh, all the way down to community stakeholders over the course of a few years. And uh, I, I'm very pleased to present this to you tonight. And uh, we are sort of at a milestone point in that we have a completed first draft of the plan, which is uh ready for your, um, your review and comment and then hopefully um a recommendation to uh forward to the township board. Um, and so in the interest of time, what I'll do is I will share my screen and I will walk you through the draft uh with a PowerPoint presentation. And each of the slides will reference individual pages in um your draft copy. And they're the uh page numbers that are actually formatted into the document, uh, just in case there are any discrepancies between those and the pages you might see in your PDF viewer. So um, if you uh want to follow along that way, um, that might be a, a good reference for you. Okay, is everybody able to see this?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. So again, um, I do want to just do a, a summary walkthrough and feel free to, um, I know there will be time for discussion afterwards. But um, you know, if anybody uh feels need to make a comment or ask a question during the, during the slides, that's, that's quite alright. Uh, just a very brief um overview, and I know many of you know this um on the, the Planning Commission, but I want to talk about the, the history of planning in Van Buren Township. And um, this effort really goes back um over thirty years to nineteen eighty-nine, when the last township-wide master plan, which was completed by McKenna, was um, was uh, uh, adopted. Um, that master plan document has been amended uh several times. Um, and in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and one, there were actually two standalone amendments. And so um, you're, you're looking at sort of the planning legacy there in that, in that photograph, and that's not all of the amended plans. There's also the uh E-course Haggerty Corridor Plan, which um was adopted in the year two thousand. Um, a separate Greenways and Trails Master Plan from two thousand and four, uh Southside Master Plan from two thousand and seven, and the Belleville Road District Plan and Market Analysis from two thousand and ten. Uh, and so when um I took over the, the task of, of um managing this process of um, of um updating the township-wide master plan, you know, there's quite a legacy of really concentrated and, and hard work uh that had gone into not only a township-wide vision over thirty years, but um specific sub-areas of the township that, uh, that had been studied. And um, one of the things we've discussed um since I joined this project back in the early uh two thousand and nineteen is, you know, the scope of having to revisit all of those areas in um the, the same level of detail and the same level of care that was taken uh for each of those uh individual projects, such as Belleville Road or Southside or what have you, um, would probably not be feasible to do for uh an update to the township-wide master plan. And so uh, the rationale that we came up with is that we would update the township-wide plan to basically be a coordinating document. Um, so this is not intended to replace um completely replace the Southside Plan or the Belleville Road Plan. Um, we want to treat those as uh companion plans. And um, we also want to look at this twenty twenty plan really as a, you know, township-wide coordinating document, the first book in a series. And the idea is that um when the time comes to update the Belleville Road Plan or the Southside Plan, or um if the township wishes to, you know, look at a different area uh or sub-area of the township in some detail, um, those future efforts will be brought into the same format as this document. And then they will be treated as, as subsequent books um of a series. Uh, so the, the rationale is that uh when the twenty twenty plan is adopted, um, if there are any contradictions, and we've, we'll get into this, we've tried to smooth things so that, that there should not be too many contradictions. But in the case that there might be a contradiction, um, the twenty twenty plan would take precedence over um the, the previous sub-area plans. We get into the introductory material, page three. Um, we want this to be, you know, a user-friendly document. Uh, your nineteen eighty-nine plan was absolutely a state of three plan for nineteen eighty-nine. Um, but in twenty twenty, what we really like to do as planners is, is make the master plan document as, as robust a policy document as the, the predecessor document was, we also want to make it user-friendly, not just for the staff, for the Planning Commission, but for any resident that wants to pick it up. We want them to be, you know, interested. We want them to be inspired, we want them to be able to jump in and really easily understand what's being communicated. And not just the residents and stakeholders, but also potential investors that maybe uh don't have a history in Van Buren Township, but uh, uh, maybe uh looking, looking to invest there with new development. We want them to be able to pick that document up very quickly, um, be inspired and understand the, the history and the story there. And so um, that's why we want to communicate that in um, you know, the how to use the master plan section. And I know everyone on the commission is very familiar with the, the purpose of a master plan. Um, you know, it's a general statement of goals and policies uh to aid in your daily decision-making, right? It's a policy foundation for your zoning ordinance. Um, that's the, uh, that's the sort of meat and potatoes of the purpose of a, of a master land use plan in the state of Michigan. Um, you know, we're, when we're talking about future uh zoning amendments or um otherwise changes to your zoning ordinance, um, you know, they should be based in, in sound overall policy. Um, right, we synchronize public improve, uh, public improvements with private development. Uh, as I mentioned, an educational and inspirational tool and sort of the guiding, the guiding standard, right? Is a standard of excellence for not only development as we move forward in the years and the decades ahead, but um a standard of excellence in terms of uh preservation as well, preservation of the things that we like, the natural resources, the community context and uh the, you know, the community character um that makes it such a wonderful place to live. And really importantly, one of the points I like to get across um when I do master planning is um, I, I want to hit the point home that we want to communicate this vision, not just to those people that are here tonight, uh, those people that are currently living in the township or, or maybe have the township on their radar screen as, as a, a place for new investment. But we want to think about communicating this vision across multiple generations, um, because elected and appointed officials are going to cycle in and out over the years. Uh, we're going to attract new residents and hopefully, um, you know, as a high-quality place to live, uh, we want to, you know, uh, retain residents and perhaps, you know, attract residents to come back. So maybe somebody right now who's a high school student uh living in the township at sixteen, you know, in ten years and fifteen years, they're going to be maybe in their early thirties, they'll maybe have moved away for college, they may be at that point ready to start a family, come back to Van Buren Township, settle down and take a leadership role in the community. We want that vision um to be sustained over um the decades and where those types of things can happen. And so uh, you see that photograph on the right-hand side of the slide. I always like to promote some of the, the rock stars of our profession and Edmund Bacon was Philadelphia's uh lead city planner for, for many decades during the twentieth century. And he said, uh, it's the future generations will determine whether the creation of the present generation will be carried forward or destroyed. So um, you know, the work that we do here tonight and, you know, going down the road in the coming, you know, months and years, um, you know, as hard as we may work for that, we want to make sure that our successors um can pick up uh that torch and, and carry it forward. Um, and uh, just in case uh people still play that, that six degrees game, um, Edmund Bacon is actually the father of actor Kevin Bacon. So little fun fact for you. Um, one of the things we, uh, we talk about in terms of organizing factors of the plan, and I think this plugs really in nicely to the discussion that was uh being had a little while ago amongst the commissioners, um, are new types of housing products. Um, you know, going forward, we need to understand what sort of the market realities are. And I know there's uh, you know, of course, been a lot of sort of topsy-turvy-ness uh in twenty twenty, just, just due to COVID. But I think that ultimately going forward, um, the general sense that uh there's going to be a, a desire, um, a growing desire um amongst many market segments to, um, for example, want um maybe a, a little bit different type of housing product, not only in terms of uh density, but maybe in terms of, of housing format. And we think of things like townhouses and row houses and other housing products that um have been successful in neighboring communities, but maybe are currently a little bit underrepresented in Van Buren Township. How do we set um a policy basis um to facilitate those uh types of housing choices, you know, going forward? So uh, we do set up the concepts of the missing middle. Um, and uh, there's, you can, you can search for this. There's a lot of uh, good material on missing middle housing, but basically, missing middle refers to the fact that in America since about the mid-twentieth century, we've built a huge amount of single-family detached residential homes with um, you know, relatively medium-to-large-sized lots, large yards, things of that nature. And we've built in our urban cores, right, a lot of high-rise, very dense, um, you know, multiplex types of residential units. But there are a lot of uh types of housing units that um were commonly built prior to the, you know, nineteen fifties, nineteen forties, um, that sort of exist in between on that continuum. And um, those might be, you know, as I've mentioned, townhouses, bungalow courts, multiplexes. So we do introduce those concepts to the reader um at the beginning of the plan, uh, as you can see on pages uh eight to eleven. We also introduced the concept of transect zones. Um, I think the transect, uh, the urban to rural transect is uh, another way to um present how we want to uh plan for future, uh, future land uses in a more contextual way and uh less in a um, in a quantitative way. We want to keep the quantitative standards um that w- we currently use and use as a basis for zoning, but we also want to add a qualitative element to it again, so the widest possible range of audiences can uh feel comfortable working with and using uh this plan. And so the transect zones are explained uh there on pages twelve to thirteen and um just in the interest of time, I don't want to uh do the whole presentation on it, but I'd be happy to answer your questions uh on that if you have any. Um, we'll get into the uh walkthrough, we'll go section by section. So the next main section of the, of the draft plan, I believe it's chapter two, is the regional context. And um, it's, uh, it makes for good reading. Um, but the, the sort of main takeaway of, of having a regional context section is to really introduce um, what I, I would refer to as the form-shaping elements of uh Van Buren Township. And what that does is it answers the question, you know, basically, why, why are things the way they are? You know, this didn't happen arbitrarily, the fact that Belleville Road is built out the way it is, the way that, the reason that Belleville Lake is where it is, the reason that Willa, Willa Run Airport is where it is. All of these things are, you know, major works of um, you know, human achievement that have taken place in this township. This is a very unique township in that so many of the, you know, major twentieth-century infrastructure projects in southeastern Michigan took place here. And, you know, as you know, um, even led to, you know, being the arsenal of democracy at Willow, uh, Willow Run Airport and um and just, you know, there's, there's been a lot of great history there. So we want to summarize that for the reader and we want to do it in such a way that, that sets the stage for, um, when you look at a map or an aerial photograph of the township today, we know why are, why did things develop? Um, when we're here in twenty twenty, why did things develop the way they did? Um, and so, you know, you begin with the, the early settlement pattern, going back to the eighteen thirties with Rossendale, Denton and Belleville. Um, you take the uh, the natural amenities such as the Metro Park, the lake, um, of course, the airport. The airport um in the nineteen forties spawned the construction of regional limited-access highways, which was a new thing um nationwide. And uh, Van Buren Township was one of the first beneficiaries of that, uh, that construction that evolved, of course, into uh having Interstate ninety-four bisecting the township. And how did all of those things adding up, um, as there was the, the, you know, baby boom and, and pressure for growth in the later twentieth century, how did those things add up to create the land uh use patterns that we currently have? And so that's where we can then move into um our existing land use chapter. Um, so if you uh take a look at pages thirty-two and thirty-three, uh, you can see a um accurate as of several months ago, um portrait of your existing land use in the township. Uh, and this was, um, we had to really sort of do this uh in an old-school sort of way, um, because the last township-wide survey of your existing land use um hadn't taken place since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, obviously, there have been a lot of changes since then. There have been a lot of surveys of smaller areas as your sub-area plans were done, but nothing, uh, nothing at the township-wide scale. Um, and so using a combination of is and um aerial, aerial photographs and GIS magic, uh, we were able to uh develop this portrait. And what you can see is um maybe a little bit different from your um sense just from driving around is that fourteen percent of the total developable land area of the township uh is still vacant and uh, and or undeveloped, uh, which is equal to uh the amount that uh is developed, uh, but dedicated to low-to-medium-density single red, uh, single-family residential developments. Um, so taken together, that's about twenty-eight percent, a little more than one-quarter of the uh, the land area. Um, still the largest total at thirty-two percent is what we call agriculture, uh, rural settlement. Uh, we thought for ease of understanding that we would combine those two into one category, um, because the lines get a little bit blurred. Um, as you're familiar with the south side of the township, you have large parcels that um in many instances, you know, the very um frontage near the road is developed with, you know, active residential use. Um, but, you know, you may have um areas going back uh many hundreds of feet that are um sort of lying fallow. In other cases, uh, they may be used for small-scale agriculture and of course, there are still uh larger-scale agriculture operations in the township. Um, but from a context perspective, um, the look and feel of that um, that type of development is, is pretty much the same. And so we wanted to categorize that um and put that back into one uh, one, one category. One of the other categories that always surprises people when we do these surveys is uh public rights of way transportation. So mainly, we're looking at just the amount of uh land that's covered in uh roads. Um, but um, you know, some railroads as well. Um, and of course, public rights of way could uh also pertain to uh, power, power line corridors and things of that nature. That's eight percent. Um, and then if we go down towards the bottom of the table, we'll see some of the more intense uses um, that really maybe stick out in people's minds as, as something that's, you know, maybe an overwhelming feature of the township are actually um really at this point taking up very little of your uh acreage. So office research, when we're thinking of like the Grace Lake area, um, and some of the um uh, other um office facilities, maybe along E-course Road and such, uh, that's a total of one percent. Um, single-use commercial, so that would include the Belleville Road Corridor, that, that's only about two percent. Um, civic and institutional use is two percent. And multifamily residential four- And multifamily residential four percent, parks, recreation and open space four percent. We move from there into the goals and objectives. And so, you know, having worked with with you and with the community stakeholders through some very successful survey, survey initiatives over the last several years, as well as public workshops, we were able to develop the the vision statement, which so far I think has been fairly well received. And you can see it here and it's also there on page thirty eight. And in the interest of time, I I won't read it word for word, but I think it does capture people's sentiments and sort of a ten thousand foot view of where where the community wants to see the township in the years to come. Now, from the vision statement, you want to develop goals and objectives. And just for reference, the nineteen eighty nine master plan, there were a hundred and seven separate objectives listed and categorized into nine separate goal areas. One of the things that we wanted to do to make this a document that could really easily be used and referenced was to try and consolidate those as much as possible. There were several, you know, in the nineteen eighty nine plan that were completely sort of outdated. But for the most part, the the sentiment and the ideas behind those objectives are the types of things that we can carry forward. But what we were able to do was we were able to simplify them, move them from nine goal areas down to seven and consolidate them down from a hundred and seven down to forty eight. So more than about a fifty percent reduction in the number of objectives. And again, you know, as sort of a day to day guide for policy, both for for staff and for planning commissioners, this should make your job a lot easier because it's, I think, not maybe reasonable expectation that to to expect everybody walking around with, you know, a hundred and seven objectives constantly at at front of mind when you're making those day to day decisions. I think the the seven goal areas, forty eight objectives are easy to read. A lot of them just simply come down to common sense, being stated in plain language. And of course, they were all informed by by the public input process. So those are the types of things we want to see in a workable master plan that's that's durable and can last. We want those goals and objectives to be front of mind as you work and live in the community every day. You want to maybe not necessarily recite all forty eight from memory, but you do want to be able to quickly understand and and reference them as needed. And so you can see that the goal areas where those objectives are listed on page thirty nine to forty six. We go through the residential, the mixed use goal area, which is a different goal area than what we had in the nineteen eighty nine plan. We combined commercial office and industrial, so sort of specialized single use areas, we combined those into one sort of umbrella goal area. The rural character, open space, natural resources and environment, mobility, and lastly, parks, recreation and community facilities. And so from goals and objectives, then we move into, like I said before, the sort of meat and potatoes of a master plan, right? Which is your future land use map and future land use categories and the zoning plan. And what we can see is that when we take sort of a portrait, which is our future land use map of where we see different land uses being sequenced throughout the township in a sort of future development scenario. And you've got to remember too, that this is under the hypothetical scenario that every single acre in the township hypothetically would get built out. Now, that's not actually going to be the case. But when we're looking at this table three that you can see on your on the the slide there at the right, when we look at percent of total acres, we're assuming that these areas are planned for a particular use, not that they're necessarily all going to be developed to that hundred percent. But what you can see sort of the main takeaways there is that a single family residential will become the dominant land use category, assuming that all of all of those planned acres were to be built out. That would be at about twenty nine percent. The agriculture rural rural settlement category would remain basically unchanged at about seventeen percent. And due to due to rounding errors and, you know, sort of proportionality calculation, those numbers change from the existing land use portrait. But what we're really trying to say is that we want to preserve those character areas that are currently ag and rural settlement and and not not take away from them. Industrial uses would comprise ten percent. Mixed use and office uses would comprise nine percent. The airport obviously is sort of a fixed asset that will sort of stay stay the way it is at nine percent. And then all other uses at another twenty five, twenty six percent. And so the takeaway is that forty six percent, so close to half of the developable acreage, developable acreage under the this future land use map would be planned for either agriculture, rural settlement or single family residential. And these categories are and the map are presented in the draft plan on pages fifty one to sixty four. And I think one of the big achievements of this effort is that you can see on this slide, you can see the legend for the present future land use map from twenty nineteen. And you can see the legend on your right from the draft future land use map from twenty twenty. We were able to take a really bewildering number of future land use categories, twenty nine in all, and reorganize them, consolidate them and eliminate a number of unnecessary categories that created not only confusion on the the part of residents and stakeholders, but confusion on on the part of, you know, seasoned seasoned planning staff. And so, you know, a number of these, we sort of reverse engineered all of your planning efforts going back thirty years. You know, there was a land use category on your map called CBD, Central Business District. And it pertained to, I think, only two or three parcels. I call that an orphaned category. That was a land use category that was defined way back in the and took up quite a large area in the center of the township around Belleville Road. Over the years, succeeding planning efforts had superseded that category with things like gateway commercial, town center edge, town center core. And then you were left with these three kind of random parcels hanging out there as CBD. So we really tried to eliminate categories like that, highway, commercial, freeway service, things of that nature that had basically become redundant. Southside commercial, which is actually very important land use category that was brought about by a very robust discussion process back in the Southside Master Plan days back in two thousand and seven, we were able to sort of merge Southside Commercial and Local Commercial under one definition that that satisfies both. So we were able to keep the spirit of the elements of our future land use categories that are important to the community, but have made this map a lot easier to understand and a lot easier to manage, I think, going forward. So some of the changes to the map, what what's new is I mentioned the commercial areas or commercial land use categories have been consolidated. If you're looking at pages forty eight to fifty one in your draft plan, you can see the the full version of the map. We've made some changes along the eastern township boundary along Hanan Road in the area of the Grace Lake Park. That entire area had been programmed for an office research, sort of large scale office park type use. And that was dating back to about nineteen ninety nine, two thousand, when the Grace Lake Amendment to the master plan came about. And that area was never able to grow into sort of an expansion of of that type of land use. And it still maintains that sort of pastoral rural settlement character. And so one of the major changes on the future land use map is a number of those parcels have just reverted back to being agriculture and rural settlement. And what that does is that actually sort of promotes what I like to call a green belt kind of kind of scenario for the township, because south of Interstate ninety four, of course, you have the the Metro Park, which has been a presence for for many years and has really, it was maybe not intended to at the township level, but it's really acted as a green belt in a way for the township. And so to just sort of sort of create that policy basis to extend that a little bit further north and create a buffer between what's now the Grace Lake area and some of those areas along Hagerty Road that could be programmed if the demand is there for a more intense campus type office use. We already have the W CCC campus in that area. And, you know, that that would be a good place for some offshoot development, but it would be buffered to the east. We also have defined a a greater number of mixed use areas in the township. Of course, the town center area has been discussed and has been in the planning stages for several years. That being that centered at the intersection of Belleville and Tyler Roads, of course, where Township Hall is and some of the some of the parcels to the north. But of course, there's going back to the Belleville Road Plan, the discussion of eventually transitioning to more robust mixed use zoning to maybe allow that type of development to occur, not only at Belleville and Tyler, but going north along Belleville toward E Course Road. We've also designated some mixed use areas at the Rossenville and I ninety four intersection as well. I think it was identified particularly in our engagement process that there was substantial potential for you know, maybe a type of redevelopment that is a little bit different than just the the idea of the sort of single use commercial auto oriented commercial district that's there that's there at present. We've also looked at the E Course Road Corridor on the north side of the Grace Lake Corporate Center as being another area where some potential mixed use zoning could take place. And lastly, the Sumter Road Corridor, just south of the city of Belleville. And again, this is not a one size fits all category in the sense that if you read the text of the master plan, you know, these are intended to be looked at one at a time, planned out, you know, at the sub area level, like was done previously, one at a time. And thus, any zoning amendments that would take place. For example, you know, there would not necessarily be a one size fits all mixed use zoning that would create the same level of intensity that maybe is desired at or near Belleville and Tyler. That wouldn't necessarily be applied to, for example, the Sumter Road Corridor going south out of Belleville. Those are two completely different contexts. But, you know, I'm a more flexible mixed use sort of vision or concept for each of those areas going forward could be looked at separately and and calibrated separately to meet the needs of the residents in each of those areas. What hasn't changed on the future land use map, generally the single family residential areas, we've kept them as as they are. And that's because the existing single family land use categories have been defined to a very sort of technical and precise standard. And so, you know, we we kind of said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We didn't want to go and potentially start creating a situation where we'd have land use categories that would open up a Pandora's box of potential future non conformities in in zoning. And so we generally kept the single family residential categories as they are. We made sure to keep the future land use intent from the Southside Master Plan exactly as it was, as it was agreed upon, because a lot of hard work was put into that. And we found that thirteen, fourteen years on Southside residents, township residents generally are very happy with how that plan has worked out. No new areas designated as multiple family residential and no new areas designated as industrial. There's still quite a bit of acreage. We could go back and look at those existing land use, future land use tables. There's quite a bit of undeveloped acreage that's still planned for industrial industrial uses in the various categories that that should serve your needs well into the future. A little offshoot of that is that the two existing waste disposal sites were redesignated. They're currently designated as industrial uses. Since we're looking at this as a future land use plan, we're planning for a scenario in which they eventually, their spaces eventually exhausted and or their capacity is reached. And those will revert, obviously, to private open space. So that is why those those areas are colored green on your future land use map. And then from the future land use map, we move into the zoning plan. And so what we were able to do here, you know, as I mentioned, we were able to consolidate and simplify these future land use categories. What we were able to do with that is look at your existing zoning ordinance and really try to do our best to make a one to one one to one mapping from a future land use category onto a corresponding zoning district, which you can see in table four. And so I think this is kind of, this is kind of a breakthrough and actually will really help future decision making and future potential investors and developers, as well as residents, to really understand the relationship between future land use and how the actual regulations impact on a parcel by parcel basis. We have recommended revisions and in some cases, a district elimination and in two cases, new zoning districts. We weren't able to do an exact one to one comparison between how we've defined future land use categories. There are some inconsistencies with the existing zoning. But if you look at the revision section on page sixty eight, and those are all referenced in that table four in the various notes, you can get a very clear picture of the changes that would be recommended to to zoning to make sure that we get it that that close to one to one correspondence between your land use categories and your zoning districts. And again, this is very important, right? It creates that clear and legally enforceable basis for future zoning decisions. So from the land use sections of the plan, we walk into the mobility plan. And in the interest of time, I don't want to belabor these points too much, but we want to talk about the circulation plan in the various planning efforts over the last ten fifteen year various points in time, new connections have been identified in various parts of the township. We wanted to have a discussion on those connections and summarize them and put them on a map in a general sense. These are not necessarily cast in stone, but we want to show where it's desired to have some additional connectivity, particularly in the central portion of the township. You know, where right now, you know, the development of the last ten, twenty years and then the potential for some really transformative development from a mixed use category would continue to put greater pressure on, you know, Belleville Road, on Tyler Road, on the I ninety four service drives, you know, and on E Course Road. And so, you know, the mobility section for the plan really lays out a case, not only, you know, in in policy, but also you know, with a, an actual rubric of of potential connections that would relieve that and make the area, you know, a lot more easy, not only to navigate by car, but also, you know, on on bicycle or on foot. We we talked not only about sort of major connections that might be developed east, west and north, south, but also what what we've termed as critical connections, which might be smaller, smaller connections between some of the minor residential streets and and some of the through routes as well. And all of these things taken together can, you know, increase safety and also increase the desirability of new sort of creative ways to do mixed use development in this portion of the township. You can also see that there are several roadway segments that may be ideal candidates for paving as development progresses and would be would be suitable just to create without having to take new rights of way. Another outlet for for better connectivity in the in the central part of the township. We've updated the non motorized plan with the latest information on all facilities. This is on pages eighty to eighty five. We've inventoried the current state of public transportation in the township, provided recommendations for improving local and regional transit service. And, you know, we want this to be a forward thinking plan. And so we've dedicated some space to And so we've dedicated some space to talk about things that, you know, have been getting some some press over the last couple of years, connected autonomous vehicles, for example. Transportation network companies, not necessarily just Uber and Lyft. There are going to be a number of things coming down the pike probably in the next five, ten or twenty years, things that we probably, none of us could actually envision at the moment. We want this plan to be able to, you know, adapt and grow with some of the new mobility technologies that even though we may not know exactly what they are, we know they're coming and they could provide, you know, really, it could be a game changer for townships such as Van Buren, rather than saying, well, do we want to, you know, for example, expand the traditional regional fixed-route bus service or fixed-route rail service? All of these discussions that we've had, at least my entire lifetime, and I know decades before, in southeastern Michigan, we may be able to solve some of these problems, you know, with new technologies, rather than just continuing the same discussion about about twentieth-century technologies. And lastly, last section of the sort of policy portion of the plan is the implementation plan. And I've just taken a brief screenshot of of one section of that plan. That's the rural character. We've organized the implementation plan by goal areas. And then from there, we have the same objectives and strategies that are listed earlier in the document. And they've just been put into a tabular format, again, for easy reference. This may be actually an easier way for, you know, day-to-day electeds, appointeds and staff to really reference these goals and objectives. And you can see that they've been prioritized with a timeframe. Of course, these timeframes would get updated when you review this plan every several years. And we've given you a sort of a roadmap in terms of how to tackle these, when to tackle these, who you might need to partner with and where the funding sources might come from. And so, you know, in the interest of time, I'd be happy to, you know, adjourn the discussion here and we we can talk about things in more detail, or I can walk you through the background summary. This is something that I know I've done with the steering committee, and I know this is something that we did last fall. But we do have, you know, quite a bit of material at the at the end of the plan, which is the demographic analysis of the township and some of the key takeaways from that. We also have a very detailed summary report out of all of the community engagement efforts that have been done from two thousand and seventeen to the present and their results. And so I'd be happy to to take you through those or, like I said, in the interest of time, we can, we can just go to discussion.
Mr. Cook, thank you very much. An impressive amount of work and and quality information for you to walk through. Let's see if there are questions or comments from the commission at this point. I know we want to try and get to a recommendation this evening, if possible. So anyone, commissioners, questions or comments for Adam or staff or just general to think about as we move forward?
I'm chair.
Mr. Boynton.
I don't have anything at this time other than that I think this is a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, it was really helpful and I liked the humor as well. Anyone who worked on the work group, the steering committee, want to tell us now that your process is nearing the end, how you feel it went and if you think we're in in good hands and headed in a good direction?
Through the chair, Carol. As as part of that, I thought it went well. Sometimes it got like it was a little long and I know there was a break in a while, but I'm glad we got back on track. It was, it was a lot of reading. I've spent a lot of times with my eyes crossed, but it it's been good. And I like what Mr. McKenna rep has done and I like the support that we've gotten, Dan Powers. It's been very refreshing.
Great. That's great to hear. Anyone else? Other commissioners?
Oh, Commissioner Atchison, please.
I was really pleased with it. Mr. Cook definitely led us, kept moving us, we kept coming back. The thing that I was really concerned about was whether we were going to get enough community participation. And with Elizabeth on staff, she went after it and captured the input, which I thought was really, really beneficial. You know, I've never done one of these before, but one of the things that I was most concerned about was not getting in enough input. And the one thing I want to leave it with is listening to the, to the, our residents. We work for them and it was good to hear their voices. And one thing I have to say that I remember from the surveys and it's something that I keep bringing up and I just want to mention it again here is we need some sort of senior housing. I want us to age and play. I don't want to lose any residents, you know, to other communities. So, but it was very good. Adam, you did a fabulous job. I learned a lot. It was great meeting the residents when we did the interactive activities to hear their voices. It was just, it was a really good experience. I recommend it, whoever wants to do it in the next ten years, definitely volunteer for it.
Thank you. That's great. Thanks, Commissioner Atchison. Commissioner Jar.
Ma'am Chair, this document's been in process for a long time. Who was, who all was on the steering committee?
Norm DeBuck, I don't know if Dan has it, Brian Kelly, myself, Sherry Budd. Who am I, oh, what was her name? She was a female. She was on the, she's on the DDA. Doc, is it Dawn Chapel?
Dawn Chapel. Yeah.
I believe that was it. Yeah.
I'll double-check, but I think that's the full list.
Well, it's a really nice document. Thank you.
Well said. Let me check, anyone in the audience, comments? Anything else from the commissioners? If we feel that our our draft, although it seems close to final, is ready, is there a motion to recommend to the township board that we move forward with sending it out for review?
So move.
Mr. Boynton, thank you. Support?
Support.
From Treasure Bud. Any discussion on the motion? Then a quick roll call vote, please.
South Jar.
Yes.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Medina Atchinson.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. Thank you. So again, thanks to everyone who worked so hard and congratulations on an excellent effort. And we're happy to send this forward with our recommendation to the township board. We are to general discussion in tonight's agenda. Anyone have a general discussion item? Director Powers, anything from staff?
You know, just to build on to that good discussion about the master plan, this has been a very, a long effort with a lot of work from all of you. That being said, you got a very big document in a relatively short timeframe before this meeting. So I I can hear that you all feel comfortable with the work that was done, but don't hesitate to let me or Adam know or Adam through me. If there are additional comments you pick up on as you continue to review these documents, that can certainly be something that we bring forward as part of the comments that get carried forward to the Board of Trustees or as part of the sixty-three-day review period. As long as there are the fundamentals of the plan, which I think were reviewed very well by Adam tonight, you, as long as you agree with those fundamentals, the major elements of the future land use map and mobility plan and goals and objectives and implementation plan. If you have minor comments, feel free to share those. Otherwise, we are still working on crafting our agenda for the July twenty-second meeting, but we believe there will be two projects, each that have a special land use and preliminary site plan component. So we will let you know with the agenda packets next week, if not before then.
Great. Thanks as always, Director Powers. Anyone else? General discussion items, commissioners? Or audience? Nothing from our moderators. In that case, I think we're close to wrap. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Mr. Boynton, support. Support. Support, Mr. Atchison. All in favor, say aye.
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 And thank you all. We are adjourned. Good, good discussions tonight.
Have a great night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.